You missed the cue, didn't you? You missed the cue.
I did.
Yeah, we queued the right.
We gotta wait till the next hour now.
I agree.
See if they can see the teleprompter?
Just give the thumbs up.
Get this out of my ear.
Welcome everyone to Hewitt, Texas City Council Workshop tonight, November seventeen, twenty twenty-five at six P. M. Uh, Dr. Bruce is not able to attend tonight, but all other members of council are present, which allows for workshop declaration of a form and a call to order at six P. M. Uh, first up on the workshop agenda, presentation review of the Hewitt Public Library policy updates, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, what you're gonna have this evening is some upcoming changes that you're gonna see regarding policies at the Hewitt Public Library, um, and some updates of some other things, but a lot of this is being stipulated out of, uh, the library's accreditation. So I thought this would be a good place for, uh, council to receive these updates from Matthew Glosser this evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
There's gonna be a riveting discussion, I'm just gonna let you know now. Um, so like Mr. Thomas said, this kind of stems from some updated accreditation criteria. Um, back in April of this year, the Texas State Library revamped their, um, administrative code for, uh, how public libraries in the state get accredited. Um, among all of those changes, um, the ones that were most relevant at this point were they are requiring all public libraries to include, um, policies on circulation, collection development, technology and privacy, and these must be publicly available, um, and posted on the city's website or the library's website. Um, so it kind of worked out in that way that we would go through all of our existing policies for these and revise them based on current service methods and, um, the needs of the library and the city. So it, we've gone through and done some revisions and, um, now I'd just like to update you on how your library is gonna be operating. Not much has changed drastically, but there is, uh, some, some stuff that would be a little bit different than probably we're used to. So the first policy is probably one of the most important. It's our circulation policy, which basically just dictates how the library operates, um, who we serve, how we serve them. We did revise this policy for, um, clarity, conciseness and brevity. Um, so it went from about eight to ten pages to probably about five, uh, just to clear things up a little bit. We also revise, um, the types of cards that we offer as well as how to access your accounts, um, revised the user agreement that everyone has to check a box for whenever they sign up for a new card. We added some details on inactivity, some criteria for assessing any damaged items, um, increasing our text share borrow limit, and we also included a new partnership with the Waco McLennan County Library. Um, that's just a general overview. Some specifics, the user agreement, um, is a little bit lengthier, but it pretty much details to the whoever's applying for a new card. They're accepting the responsibility for all the items that they've borrowed on their card. Um, they're acknowledging all of the library's policies. So there's a statement on here with the link to the city's website, to the page where our policies are posted, so that they can review them. And this also includes if their card is lost or stolen, then they should report it to us as soon as possible because they would still be responsible for any items that are checked out under their card. So that just puts it upfront. If somebody steals your card, whether it's a family member or you lose it and somebody comes in and checks out fifty items, you're on the hook for those. And outlines that in the agreement, which we have on file on their, their record up until they renew their card and basically do it again. For any, um, there is a line in here as well that just the continuous use of your library card constitutes your agreement to the, the policies, just so that you're aware. So it's encouraged for everyone who gets a library card to, to know how their card operates and what the library's policies and procedures are. Our eligibility has not changed. Um, so anyone in the county is eligible for a library card, and this is due to, uh, the funding that we get from McLennan County every year, um, for the provision of library services to McLennan County residents. Um, we did modify in our system, uh, a little bit so that we can track what cardholders are where and what kind. Um, so if they're McLennan County residents, we've marked them as county. If they're Hewitt residents, we mark them as Hewitt. But any county college students, so if they go to MCC, uh, or Baylor or any other school in the area, but they don't necessarily live here. If they've got a student ID or they're living on campus, then they're also eligible for a card because they're living in the county and contributing to the county. Um, as well as county property owners, if they don't live in the county, but they own property and they pay county taxes, then they're also eligible as long as they provide proof of ownership within the, within the county. That goes for, uh, people who don't live here, but maybe they just have property or people who live here for half of the year, um, and live somewhere else otherwise. And then our non-county residents are still charged forty dollars for one year of membership and ten dollars for three months. We also changed up the name a little bit, but this is something we've offered, technology cards. Those are good for in-library resources, which includes our study rooms, our computers, um, anything that circulates in the building, but it also gives, um, online borrowing. So Libby, um, our language resource and our texture databases. So those are available to anybody with a texture card. Since they're not borrowing any physical items, they're not liable for any of our materials, so we do allow them that access. Something new that we've put up is eligibility for minors. So before it was only for, uh, the heads of households or parents, pretty much just adults. But now we're extending it to minors with a few, um, options for the minors. So they have to have at least one responsible party, whether that's one parent or they can specify both parents. We do need the responsible party's driver's license still and contact information, but they cannot have a library card without being attached to an adult library card. Um, it, that person also is authorizing their account use, um, and accepting any responsibility financially for items lost or anything like that. Um, they have a reduced borrow limit of fifteen items, but they still have access to anything that an adult card does have. But we've also provided an opt-out form for those minors. So if a parent decides to fill out this form, they can opt out of any online collections, which is just a flip of a switch for us. So if the parent doesn't want them to access Libby or our Comics Plus resources, we can just turn that off and they can only borrow materials inside the library. And that stays on file with us until they turn eighteen. It'll automatically roll over or until a parent or their responsible party fills out an addendum and says, actually, yeah, they're, they can have access to these things. Um, and then aside from the minor, only the responsible party or the responsible parties listed can access their account. So if they're not listed on the minor's account, they can't access any of the information that's on there. We've also added an inactivity policy. So on October first of each year, we did this, uh, this past October. Anyone with at least three years and one day of inactivity is going to be removed from our cardholder records, um, so that we can keep as many records as up to date as possible and have an accurate number of active card users or cardholders. Uh, this deletes all of their borrowing history, um, and basically their whole thing with the library is gone unless they have outstanding items or outstanding fees. Then they stay indefinitely. Um, that also helps so that if somebody lapses and say they get eligible for deletion, uh, they come back five years later, they've got a hundred dollar fine on their account. We've still got it so that we can say, ten years ago, you borrowed these items and this is on your record. Uh, so they don't necessarily have that waived. Um, and then any deleted cardholders must submit proof of residence and reapply so that we maintain the, an accurate record. Our fines and fees were modified a little bit. Um, so our late fees are assessed if an item isn't returned by the close of business on the due date or placed in the outside book drop to be checked in the next morning. The daily rate books are fifty cents per day. Media is a dollar per day. Um, we did add technology. It still applies on the master fee schedule as any media, but we are highlighting this a little bit because we are getting some new technology with our grant funds. So, um, any technology that's overdue will also be a dollar a day. Um, and any outstanding fees that exceed ten dollars will block that member's account until it's resolved, which we did do a couple of years ago. Um, but we're starting to focus a little bit more on it. Basically, if you've got nine dollars and ninety-nine cents of late fees, you're still free to check out. But once you hit ten dollars and one cent, then it blocks you and, and then we have a discussion with the cardholder about, um, getting items back or paying down that, that fine. But they still get some access even if they have an outstanding balance. Lost and damaged items, there we go. Uh, so any items that are considered lost if they're borrowed and not returned forty-five days after the due date. Uh, so everyone gets at least one renewal, uh, if the item is available, but at forty-five days, they will have gotten three overdue notices. And if it's not been returned, it will be charged to their account as a lost or missing item. And it will stay there until they have a discussion or, um, unless a payment is made for the item. So damaged, uh, lost items are obviously if they don't know where they are, they're probably never gonna be seen again. Damaged items are beyond the normal wear and tear. Um, dog gets a hold of it, it falls in the bathtub, um, gets muddy all over. If, if it's going to ruin the experience for the next person to borrow it, then it's most likely considered damaged. And we charge those, uh, those folks the cost that the, the MSRP cost plus a five-dollar processing fee. Um, partial damage, we've got on the master fee schedule now, that's about the cost of the item times twenty-five percent. Um, and that's for if a page has been torn or if there's enough stains, but it doesn't necessarily ruin the entirety of the book and it can still circulate safely without spreading mold or, um, if, if the words are still legible or the pictures are still there. If we can relative, if we can fix it well enough that it's still usable, then we'll just charge a partial damage fee if that seems to apply the best. Our damaged criteria, we've also added in there so that we're kind of clear of what we're looking for. Water, food, mold and mildew, odor, infestation. So that one kind of throws people off a little bit. If they happen to get some pages wet, but they think that they've dried it out, that can still develop mold. And if you put it with other books, then it can spread to the other books and then you've got a mold problem. So that's something we really look for. If anything's chewed by a dog or by babies, uh, we typically count that as damaged because if, if it's a child that's been chewing on the book, that's technically germs and we're passing that on. If it's a dog, they've probably gotten more to just the corners. So we make sure to look at that. Any pages that are missing are marked. So if the words are completely illegible or if an important page is missing and it, you can't really complete the, the book without it, we count that. Missing parts, other damages, um, anything that obscures text and illustrations, we're looking for all of those. And if it meets the, one or more of these criteria and it's bad enough that we have to remove the item or even replace it, then we count it as damaged. So the replacement cost for these items, um, we have been looking at this based on some feedback and what our standard, uh, charges have been. And what we've found is historically, we have been charging the MSRP, which is what's in our record. So once we create that record, if a book costs eighteen ninety-nine, but say the library only paid eleven ninety-nine, that's what's in the record. That's what they're being charged. But if, at the moment, we haven't been accepting donated copies because if somebody purchases a replacement copy on Amazon and they bring it into us, it might not be the exact copies. So we have to change some parts of the record. They could bring us a paperback when we really had a hardback. Um, there's a lot of different circumstances for that, but if they can get a brand new item for seven ninety-nine and we're gonna charge them eighteen ninety-nine plus a processing fee, I wanted to kind of look at that so that we're not price gauging or anything and we're still making up for the cost that the library suffered, but not forcing somebody else to pay more than it's worth. So we are trying to adjust the way that we do that to charge the price listed in the items record as a default. Uh, the supplier's current price, which is when we do our monthly book orders, if they have it at a lower cost, we'll kind of go off of that. Or the price the library initially paid. Um, so those second two criteria will be a little bit more equitable rather than charging twenty-four ninety-nine for a picture book that was purchased back in two thousand and four. It just doesn't seem very equitable for, for the people who've damaged those items, but we still wanna be able to have that conversation and hold them accountable for the library's materials. Um, but all the replacement costs do include a five-dollar, uh, non-refundable processing fee that goes towards the labeling, the label paper, the protective film and all of that. And then new unused, unopened and exact copies may be provided in lieu of a fee, only with approval from the library administration. So from me or from the library or program managers, we can make that distinction as well as still do the five-dollar processing fee if that seems to make enough sense. So that covers our circulation. Um, collection development is the second most important one because it determines everything that we put in the collection, everything we order. So we also revise this one for clarity, conciseness and brevity. Uh, this used to be about fifteen pages and now it's about six or seven. We clarified the selection criteria for how we order all of our materials, included information on selection sources, uh, details on self-published titles and, uh, library vendors that we order from, um, collection areas and general content of each collection, the collection maintenance criteria, and we revised the reconsideration process for a little bit more efficiency. The selection and maintenance, this is how we bring materials into the library and then decide which materials are ready to go out of the library. The criteria, whether they're purchased or donated, um, everything, everything follows the same criteria. And an item doesn't need to meet every criterion to be added to the collection, um, as long as they meet at least one. It includes the audience appeal and readability, which is pretty much our entire collection, um, whatever's popular, whatever people want to read. Whatever's hot at the moment is gonna be added because it will circulate a lot in a relatively short time. Uh, content quality and significance, we wanna make sure we don't get any AI-generated content that's not quality, but might just be quickly produced. Uh, or anything that's completely inaccurate or misleading if we can help it. Accuracy and currency, this kind of goes for like current events types of things. They might be popular. So they'll be current for a year, but then maybe the next year it's kind of a fad, it dropped out and people don't really wanna read it anymore. Context to the collection, relevance to the community, format and usability, this also goes into what we have digitally. So if we have something that's readily available online and it's not cost-effective to purchase a physical copy, then we won't purchase that and we'll just direct people to the online version. Demand and circulation and cost and availability. So if it's not cost-effective to get it in general, we're probably not going to order it, especially if we can do an interlibrary loan, if we can get it from the Waco Library. We really wanna make sure that we're getting things that people want and that they can use without spending money unnecessarily on something that's gonna sit on the shelf. That's, that's what we call a book is dead on arrival. It just, it gets bought, it sits there, it doesn't go anywhere. Uh, the modified version, um, is some additional criteria when removing any materials, which also includes content and relevance. So if it's no longer popular, it's probably going to get weeded to make room for new materials. Condition and format. So if it hasn't been charged for damages or, um, any partial damages, but it's served its time. It's maybe ten years or so, it's been through a, it's well-loved, as we call it, the binding starts to come apart, pages get yellow and wrinkly and everything. If it's just more or less unsightly and we can get a better copy or if it's got a newer addition, then we'll, um, remove something for that. Use and demand, this happens with DVDs and audiobooks on CD a lot. If they've got over a hundred uses, they're probably gonna skip and they're not gonna work well, so we can remove something, um, for that. And then it adds special considerations such as the visual appeal. Um, believe it or not, if it doesn't look great, somebody's less likely to touch it, even if it's a great read. You can have great expectations and everybody wants to read it, but if it looks ugly, they're not gonna want it. Electronic access, if we've got the audiobooks or the eBooks online, um, even magazines through databases or anything. Alternate formats would also be digital and space. So if we ever need additional space and we have to decide something's gotta go to make room for whatever's coming in, then we'll also take that into consideration. So our reconsideration policy, um, has also been modified just a little bit. Um, a lot of it has not changed. What hasn't changed is the, only the Hewitt residents may submit a request, so they must live in Hewitt. They have to have an active library card to submit a reconsideration request. Some new things in there, no more than five requests in a six-month period from any one person, um, so that we are not overwhelmed because it does take, take, uh, a significant amount of time to review materials. We have a statement on the use of artificial intelligence, so any reconsideration requests should be original, um, your own words and not generated, using AI or any other database or copy and paste another's work for this. An acknowledgement of the request will be sent within thirty days of submission and a decision within sixty days of the submission, which is still a quick turnaround, but it can be done if there are limits on how many are submitted. Also unchanged is if it's appealed, the library board's decision will be final. So if my decision was appealed, it would go to the board and then the board would have the final say. Regardless, after the final decision, the item will be ineligible for further reconsideration. So that we're not spending more time evaluating an item that has already been through the evaluation process. And we made this, these changes because of the time and staff power and, um, payroll that it will take to review so many materials. So hopefully this will help out at, with that process, um, but fortunately we don't get those very often, if ever. Um, this is just to have as updated and as, to be as proactive as possible. Next up is a pretty simple, uh, policy. It's the technology policy. Uh, this clarifies the use of public computers, who can use them, how they should be used, um, an acknowledgement that you accept responsibility for any malware they might try to access. Anything that they're not supposed to be doing, that they do try to do. It includes device lending, so pretty soon we will have some hotspots and some laptops to circulate. It will talk about those, which also links back to our circulation policies. So if they do damage or lose one of these pieces of equipment, they will be charged for it. It adds limits to the types of acceptable documents that are accepted, um, on the staff side. So if anybody needs us to print something, they need to email it to us. If it's a, if it's an HTML document, we're not gonna open it, they won't accept it. Um, if it's anything aside from a, a Word document or a PDF, we're probably not going to do it just for cybersecurity safety. Uh, it does include the same prohibited technologies that are in the city of Hewitt's, um, technology policy and, um, aligns with the Department of Information Resources, um, from the state. So it acknowledges that, say TikTok is not available on the library's public network, um, just based on these other requirements, citywide and statewide. Prohibits external media and staff devices, so we're trying to get away from any USB drives being inserted into staff computers. They could be completely safe, but just to be safe on our end, we will require them to insert these devices on the public computers. Because it also states that any public computers will wipe the memory and everything on the device's restart. So that if there is something fishy about the device, once the computer restarts, it should be taken care of and completely safe to use again. And then we did also include another statement on artificial intelligence, mostly for the staff side. So if we use AI to generate any documents or promotional materials or anything, and it seems like it's in a, it's most likely ethical to acknowledge that we use artificial intelligence for that, then, then we will. And that would go for, uh, newsletters or photos used for marketing. We don't wanna infringe on any copyright. So that's more for staff to recognize that AI was used. But it also, um, acknowledges in the privacy policy that we will not use artificial intelligence for any confidential or sensitive information, which for us is pretty much cardholder records or any usage statistics that might have a chance of identifying an individual. We're not gonna use AI for any of that. The privacy policy is pretty important for maintaining cardholder record privacy, so we don't share their borrowing history with anyone. We do follow state and federal law, so if we were subpoenaed or got a court order to release information, we would. But, um, other than that, we would only release any information to the cardholder, a responsible party listed. Or, um, if we're trying to, uh, follow up on any missing items or outstanding fees, we might release the bare minimum information on a record to whoever might be the best bet of helping us settle those fees. So if it's, um, a, an adult in a household, but they live with another adult who's not technically responsible for them, we could call the household and if that other adult answers, we could say, hey, so-and-so has some items out. We're trying to settle this. If you could pass on the message. That way we're not giving out all of the information and disrespecting their privacy, but we're still being proactive and trying to settle those outstanding fees and, um, records. So if anybody has any questions on any of that, I think I was under time today.
One curious one, real quick. So we can't use AI on card member data and things like that, uh, at least what I was understanding. When, when would like that, at a different library, not us, how would AI use that stuff anyway? Just like, I, I truly have no idea.
So there are a few third-party systems that take advantage of a little bit of AI when trying to, um, so some records from our catalog system will export, um, like the material codes for different items. So this is a children's book, this is an adult nonfiction book, and it'll export those to let AI kind of tell you, um, children's books are trending this way based on title and usage and time of day and whatever. So that way it kind of helps you market your collection. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't give out the first and last name of that person, it doesn't give out their card number.
Yeah.
It only gives out the, the trends of the materials themselves.
Yeah, where we need to be putting more money into and things like that.
I'm sorry?
Where we would need to be putting more money like into, like where the interest of the users are.
Yes, yes, exactly. We have, um, an email marketing system that kind of does that. It doesn't necessarily use AI, but it does import those records on the materials. And then clusters people without giving their specific information. So that if we wanted to market to people who check out majority of children's books, they're all clustered together. But it's not giving away any sensitive information to the company. It's only giving out those limited and, those limited details.
Yeah, cool. That makes sense. Awesome. Thank you.
If we ever came across another system that used AI, we would make sure that it follows the same security practices as us.
Yeah, okay, cool. I appreciate that and I appreciate the explanation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I would say that it's clear that Hewitt Public Library policies, maintaining a high quality to the public is really shown here tonight. And also keeping the, I would assume, but keeping the products fresh, new, in good shape, you know, make it clear the ones out that don't get used much and just keeping, I use word fresh, but you know, content for, for the, for the public, but also the fines and the fees. I hadn't thought about that, but it seemed like Hewitt Public Library is more than fair in that, and that's great. That's something I hadn't thought about.
We definitely try to be fair, we work with everyone so that we're not, because the different fines and fees studies have kind of put that fact out there that the more somebody racks up in fines, the less likely they're gonna come in.
Sure.
If at least because of the shame that they feel because of having those. So we try to work with them as much as possible, but we looked at a couple of other libraries in larger areas like Austin and smaller areas locally and to see what they do. And a lot of them do charge for replacement items that are just what the library paid, so if you damaged it, we just want what we paid back. But also just adjusting what the limits are for, what the threshold is before we actually have to have a conversation. Some libraries like us, we do ten dollars, some libraries might do twenty-five to fifty. It just depends on what the, what the community looks like at that point and if you have a really hard time working with those. But it's, it seems to work out, you get a few more people come in if they know that they have a little bit of grace.
Sure, sure. No, they're, they're very fair for that, so. Anybody have anything? Matthew, that was great. I appreciate, did you have anything else?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Very thoughtful, thank you. And the next item, number two, is a presentation discussion regarding a possible fire station alerting system. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Our Chief Christian tonight would like to come talk to you about an item that we need to be considering, having ordered and done based upon the advent of having two fire departments in the near future. And so this is about a, a piece of technology that he wants to visit with me about. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Hopefully this will be a quick discussion. This is something that came up, we sort of knew it was coming, didn't know what all it was gonna actually entail and thought we were gonna have to bring it to you. Hopefully, we don't have to bring this back to you, but it's still a good piece to, to bring to you and inform to you on what we're, what we're looking at doing and where we're heading in this direction. So the fire station alerting is basically to notify the station that you have a call that comes from our dispatch center. Right now, we don't have any fire station alerting at all. We just have a patch into our dispatch, so all radio traffic on our fire department channel goes through the speakers in Station One all the time. So it doesn't matter if we're there, we're not there, if one crew has already left and the other crew's still there. You're still getting all the radio traffic, a, all the time, all night, all the time. And when we, when we do have a call, we get an alert tone that's a pretty loud, you may have heard it when you've been around the fire station, it's sort of shocking, a loud tone. And then they hear, in the middle of the night, they'll hear the tone, they've gotta get up, they've gotta get ready, they've gotta find their way to the door, they've got to open the door, and then all the lights come on and about blind you and then make their way to the truck. And so there's some things that make it difficult. And with the technology advancing the way it is and the research that's been done into this, there's a lot of folks looking at how we can be more heart-healthy with our firefighters, so when we do have tones that are activated, especially at night, when the guys are resting and you, you wake them up in the, for, in the middle of the night for a call, that you don't spike their heart rate and startle them so much before they just have to go think clearly and calmly and focused and, and trying to keep that a little more level-headedness. And then also not blinding everyone and losing your night vision when you're going out into the middle of the night by flipping on all the lights, just to find your way out of the station. So what we're looking at doing is a system that has, basically dispatch is able to set off the tones, but the tones are monitored in a different way, and that sets off a box that's listening all the time. And so in the evenings, they can turn it on to the night mode and then it's not monitoring all the radio traffic. And it will only turn on the speakers when they actually have a tone at that station, either Station One or Station Two. And then it will actually sort of, they use HeartSafe tones that are a little like quieter tones that will step up in volume to wake them up, and then a voice to say what they have, either a medical call or a steel alarm or something like that. And then with the activation of the speakers, you also get activation of low-level red lighting throughout the station so that you can see to get your shoes on, make your way out to the bunk room, the hallway is lit with red lights, and then you're gonna be out into the bay with red lights. And so you, you don't lose, you don't get that startle effect of the losing all your night vision. There's other things we can do. With the new station, we'll have a gas shut-off 'cause we'll have gas at that station. So it actually, whenever a tone comes in, it will shut down the gas to the kitchen so that if you're cooking, it just cuts off all the gas. And you don't have to worry about, somebody forgot to cut the burner off or it didn't get cut off all the way and it got left on. I've been at a department that had that happen before. It's not fun, so that's something that we, we really wanna make sure we, we get on top of. And it can also do other things, like you can even wire doorbells into it that will, you know, wake everybody up in the middle of the night and say, hey, there's actually somebody at the door, and so that you can sort of set off an internal alarm to go check. So there's a lot of different things we can do with these technology, even so much as bed shakers that you can add that actually vibrate to, like under a pillow that will actually sort of startle you, not startle you awake, but sort of shake you awake a little bit. It's actually supposed to be easier to wake than a loud tone or, or bright lights going off. So these systems are just used to notify the different stations. The systems that we're looking at are just sort of standalone systems in each station, they're all very basic technology. There's, there's ranges that can go, you can get, you can get alerting systems to open doors for you and do all kinds of stuff, and they get very, very expensive, and that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for very basic alerting, but still staying in the new technology of HeartSafe and sort of making it an easier transition from, in the middle of the night to get up and get to the truck and go on a call. So that's what we're looking at doing. We've, we've got a couple of different quotes out, so I, I think we're gonna be able to, to find a really good option for us that is not going to be as, as big of a, as a cost as we thought it was going to be. And that will allow us to actually maintain the system and make any changes we need to it much easier. It's, it's, it's good technology on a low-tech basis, if that makes sense. So that's it, we're just gonna wanted to sort of bring you up to sort of what we're doing, sort of one of those things that we, we sort of, we thought about it, but we didn't really know what all it was gonna involve into getting the alerting to both stations. So as we're doing it for Station Two, we're also gonna do it for Station One, that way we can mirror. And this is, one of the other things about this is, in, in the middle of the night, when you have Station Two go on a call, you won't be waking up Station One. And same way, vice versa, if Station One goes, you won't wake up Station Two. And then the other thing is, at Station One right now, if you go on a call and the ladder truck's still at the station, they get to listen to all the radio traffic. So they're en route, they're on scene, they need a, a wrecker. Hey, Joe, go move the hose over here to the other side of the, the street. Hey, you know, somebody bring me a broom. Every bit of radio traffic's gonna come back through the speakers. And with the new system, it won't do that. It'll actually shut off the speakers again after about a minute. The speakers will, it'll go back into monitor mode, and so the lights go off, the speakers go off, and until you get toned out for another call, they don't come back on, so. With that, any questions? I'd be happy to, to field any and just sort of keep you updated on what, where we're heading.
Yeah, if you don't take this wrong, 'cause there's something new for me to think about. Is this something that's kind of new, that's come along on the buzzing of the beds and not being so loud? And I understand the Station One versus Two.
There, there is some new technology, but the HeartSafe alerting has been going on for probably about ten years, moving in that direction, just doing different ways to try and, and do different things. A lot of that has gone to more IP-addressed. It's actually through like Voice Over Internet Protocol, and it's not over the radio system, so it hooks into your CAD and it's all computer-controlled. The system that we're looking at is more of the older system that's radio-operated, so it works off our radios. So we don't need to worry about internet lines going down or anything like that. If our radios are working, we're gonna get toned out. And, but it integrates the HeartSafe tones, and so you have selectable tones and some other things to, to use, and we can really customize it. And if, if we move to something and it doesn't work very well, we can change that pretty easy, so.
HeartSafe tones, okay.
If, if, if you can imagine, and I was, I was going to just call dispatch and have them set off an alarm for it.
And this is to get your attention.
It, it's loud, and, and some people don't have a problem with it as much, and some people, it will scare them to death and they jump out of, they jump out of their bed like you just walked in and dropped a pan, you know, a box of pans right next to the bed. And their heart rates will go up to about one sixty, one seventy just with the initial drop of the tone, and that's before you've done anything. And then you start, all that adrenaline hits you really hard and it just, it's the, it's the, it's not the one-time scare, it's the waking up four times a night for twenty years, thirty years. It's, that's where the, that's where the, the strain on the body goes, 'cause you're just going up and down.
I get that perspective. I kind of want the heart rate up and I want them not, not to where it's ill effect.
Right, you want them, you want them to get going and you, you want them to get, you want them to get early notification and get moving quickly, but we wanna also not, and the other thing is, really, it, it keeps them from getting, you, you almost don't want them to get too amped up, because we're, we're long haul, I mean, if you're going to a fire, you, you have to treat it like, okay, we're excited, but we, we can't get too excited, 'cause if I'm too excited, I, I go through my bottles quicker, I'm not thinking clear, I get tunnel vision. You know, we wanna, we wanna keep a calm head.
That's that lizard brain I've heard about before.
Yeah, it happens.
I really like the idea of not waking up Station Two for one and vice versa, you know, if not, if not needed, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Both are more. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
So, so is this already included with some of the things either, I don't know, construction funding costs, et cetera, for Station Two? Or is this gonna be, I, I realize for Station One, it's probably, you know, not, but is this already included with Station Two? Or is this something we're gonna be doing as a package?
It's, it's not included in the, the build of the station, but we are, we'd be including it in our furnitures and fixtures, sort of part of the infrastructure going, that we're, we're doing on the backside, out of the bond, but moving, you know, furnishing the station with the equipment, just like putting computers in the station and chairs and tables and desks and those, those kind of things.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody else? Chief, you have any?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's number two. Mr. Thomas, did you have anything else?
That's all workshop items we had, sir.
Well, at that point, I guess for the workshop adjournment, I'll call for a motion, please.
So moved?
Turner, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, and with that, if you could please, hold the council.
Potter?
Yes.
Van Kelly?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Horton Berry?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries five to zero. And the meeting is adjourned at six forty-three. Thank you.
I have to go for you.
All right, welcome back everyone. You at Texas City Council regular meeting tonight, November 17, 2025, at 17:00 p.m. Dr. Bruce is not open to attend tonight, but all of the members of council are here, which allows for a workshop declaration of form and a call to order. If you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In the public comments, Lydia, did we have anybody tonight?
Yes.
The city council does invite citizens to speak on any topic not on our schedule for a public hearing. The Texas Civil Medias Act prohibits the council from discussing, reporting to, or acting on any comments or items not posted on the agenda. Citizens who wish to speak must complete the public comment for the presentation of the city secretary for the meeting. Kind of got that out of order. Thank you. Next item number three is to approve the minutes of the November 3, 2025, city council workshop regular meeting. This time I'm open to council for any corrections and a movement to a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stevens.
I move to approve the minutes as presented and allow for corrections.
We have a movement to a motion for Mr. Stevens. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Turner. We have a motion for Mr. Stevens and a second for Mr. Turner. This time, Lydia, if you could please pull the question.
Ben Kelly.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Ford Mary.
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries five to zero. Next item number four is your presentation of the report from the city engineer, Mr. Miles Whitney, on the pending utility projects, street projects, and drainage projects. Good evening.
Good evening. In your report, you should have my written report and y'all's packet, but as always, we'll start with the utility projects, Commerce Park, plant improvements, the well. So, the well construction is on kind of pause right now as they get the plant portion to the connected into everything so they can put it through its paces. The status on it is they're working on a disconnect to be delivered and it's kind of a joint deal between the plant contractor's electrical sub and the well driller itself. There was some equipment that was not installed, so they're getting the plant's sub to install it on behalf of our well contractor. Last time I told you I'd bring y'all an update on schedules and such, so I'm going to handle those as we approach them. But as y'all are aware, November of '23 is when we issued the notice to proceed on that well. They had 180 days to complete that project in April of '25. If y'all recall, we had some issues with the, or April of '24, excuse me, the well pump being dropped, so they spent 95 days getting corrective actions prepared and performed to get that back in operation. And then as of August 5 of '24, we have suspended their contract time to the point where the plant contractor has progressed far enough where they can come back on site and finish it up. So, right now, we're technically still in the time suspended area, waiting on the electrical sub to get the power lines ran and all the equipment installed. Once it is, Weisenger, the well contractor, will come back on site, review the installations, and give their approvals or comments on what's installed, and we'll get the final testing of that well performed and the final water samples pulled so we can get it to TCQ for approval for potable use. Moving to the plant portion, again, as I just mentioned, still working on electrical stuff. Current time schedule on that one is notice proceed was issued May of '24. They had 450 days to complete that project. That would have put it September 12 should have been the substantial completion date. As we sit right now, we are 80, or, excuse me, currently, the time schedules, they anticipate to be completed by December 5 for startups and putting those plants or pumps and the disinfectant system through its paces. If that schedule holds through, true, there'll be 84 days past the September 12 substantial completion date. And there's a myriad of issues that have come up on why they've been pushing back. Some of it is just the subcontractors not being as available as we had hoped originally during the installation. Moving down to transportation projects, East Wall and Briarfield. If y'all driven by the side, they are continuing with the installation of the storm sewer. They are completed with the East Wall portion and moved on to Briarfield. Also, on East Wall, they have begun the street prep and liming of subgrade on the portions between Briarfield and Blue Jay. So, they're on the far east side of that project. They're getting that area formed up, and if all goes well and the weather holds out, they'll be pouring some of that curb and gutter this Wednesday. Update on time schedule on that. Notice proceed was issued July 24 of this year. There's 240 calendar days on that project. That would put the substantial completion date for March 21 of '26. However, we did a meeting with them December 23 to go over schedules and talk about the progress of the project itself. Right now, their construction schedule that they provided says substantial completion would be April 6, so that would be 16 days after. Now, their project schedule that they provided, they do anticipate paving the proposed, or the new roadways prior to the original contract time, so they have some miscellaneous cleanup listed as going on after the initial contract time of there. So, I'm going to jump back up because I forgot lift station number four. Sorry about that. We did have a meeting with Tech dot on Friday to go over our plans and our proposed installation procedures within the right of way and underneath their roadways. We've got some more direction from them on how to progress with that. There are some revisions that we're going to have to do on our plan set where they're asking us to perform some additional bores under key waterways and some other roadways that we initially talked about potentially open cutting. And then we are scheduled to meet with the city of Waco on the 20th to discuss our connection points because they're proposing some revision point of entries, so we're discussing how to bring that into our scope of work. Going on back, back down to Minute Pier, New Acres, and Sunset, Sunnydale, and Redbud. We have the utility portions pretty much wrapped up on that design. All we're lacking is the final geotech recommendations for those reclaimed projects. So, as soon as we get those in our hands, we'll get those plans updated and get those repair profiles included, and we'll be ready for bid on that one very shortly. So, with that, that is my report. If there are any specific questions.
Yes, sir.
Miles, when do you, the well, when do you think it will be operational, that the city can use it?
So, if they get the disconnect delivered, in our meeting last Wednesday, they indicated that if it was ordered last week, it was going to be about a four-week delivery time period, forget that disconnect here. So, that's going to put us mid-December before that would happen. If that occurs, we will do the final pump testing and the disinfectant probably mid-December. Holidays might jack with a little bit, maybe go into January a little bit. We'll get that submitted to them, to TCQ. Once that information is submitted, it'll probably be about a 30-day turnaround from TCQ for approved temporary use of that well. And then we'll use that well for, I think it's 60 days, and at the end of 60 days, we take additional samples. If everything passes on it, then we'll have complete approval of that well. So, I'm going to say it's going to be late winter, early spring before we get final approval, but potentially be utilizing it, or the capability of utilizing it, January, or February time period.
So, after the initial approval, and it's operational, I mean, are we actually using at that point to get to our 60-day final approval?
Correct, correct. We have temper, a conditional approval to utilize the well as a potable source, and of course, we'll be, you know, we have to track our disinfectants like we do with our existing wells, so there's nothing out of protocol on it. And then at the end of 60 days, we'll take another raw water sample to make sure the conditions haven't changed during that time period. If they remain the same, we'll submit that information back to them and then get the final approvals.
I think we're good. Thank you.
We're running.
Thank you. Next up, number five, item number five, is discussion concerning the financial statements for the period ending October 31, 2025. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. On November 7, our finance director, Lee Garcia, emailed council the monthly financial statements ending October 31, 2025. It's just an opportunity to have it on the agenda should there need to be any conversation about those financials.
Counsel, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is discussing the possible action on resolution number 2025-14, casting votes to elect directors from McLennan Central Appraisal District for a four-year term beginning January 1, 2026. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. You have three candidates seeking to be on the board of directors of McLennan Central Appraisal District, but there's only two spots available on board. The city has a total of 75 votes, and you can divvy those votes up however council deems fit for one or one and/or two or all candidates possibly, if that's what you wanted to do. But the nominees are Dwayne Moss, Jim Patton, and Jim Smith. This item is actually not due to, back to the appraisal district until, it has to be there before December 15. So, if you're not sure possibly how you want to cast your votes this evening as a council, you'll have a meeting of December 8, which you could take this up again if so be.
This time I'm open to council for any discussion or questions before a little bit of motion.
I have no opinions on anybody.
Well, I don't, and...
And I realize that it may seem a bit pointless, but it's like we split them 25 each, you're only electing two, like I, Mr. Thomas, has there been any indication of anybody at all asking, promoting themselves, anything? Can we just throw a dart and see which name hits?
None, none other than the, you know, the information that you kind of have in your packet, as well as respectively, I'm not sure who all nominated, Mr. Moss or Mr. Patton. I know Mr. Smith is probably nominated by McLennan County would be my guess.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
No, no.
What can we just divide them, Richard? Go ahead.
Mr. Smith, I know him, I mean, he's the county commissioner and he's also, I think, retired superintendent from Robinson, Iowa.
Oh, yes.
And I believe he would be very good, but the other two I don't know anything about.
That's right. He was with educators for a while too, wasn't he?
Yes, I think so.
I'm fine with casting a mold in him, but I have no clue the other two.
But that's fine, there's two seats, so do we have to vote for two people?
Well, you can cast your ballot, your votes, however you so choose. You can, you can let one individual have all of them, or you can cut them in half and provide them two, or just however you want to do that.
Okay, well, I mean, other than Mr. Smith, I don't have any knowledge or information on the other two.
Well, I'm good with putting off 75 in the majority.
I'm fine with that too.
Yeah.
All right.
Based on that, I will call for a little bit of motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move approval of resolution number 2025-14, casting the city's votes to elect director for McLennan County McLennan Central Appraisal District for a four-year term beginning January 1, 2026, as follows. 75 votes for Jim Smith.
Second.
I have enough here for Mr. Kelly and Mr. Potter on the second. This time, Lydia, if you could please pull the council.
Stevens.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Ben Kelly.
Yes.
Ford Mary.
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries five to zero. Next up, number seven, is the request for future workshops and/or agendas. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Just any suggestions that you might have for future workshops. Our list is getting shorter and shorter in terms of the things that we've got planned moving forward, and some of them are the items that we would plan to bring as a workshop are still a few months away from being prepared to be, you know, presented. So, if you have anything, let us know. We'll be happy to try to accommodate.
Yes, sir. I've just absolutely loved them for the past few weeks. I know y'all, I don't know, y'all may detest them on the opposite side of that, but boy, they have been so beneficial for me in learning just the backside of things. I've really enjoyed them. Wish I could contribute more ideas, specific things. Sometimes I don't know what I like until I see it.
Well, this may be ahead of the game, but you know, I know this, this, I'll call it a bitter pill, I guess I just did. But anyway, the WMR's situation is coming up in the future. We talked about it, maybe not a year ago, but just kind of where we are, maybe, I know we just got into this budget, but are there things that we need to look at or talk about and plan for, or just anything that's out there on the horizon that's worth talking about on the future workshop? Could that be something that, kind of, I know it's in the media all the time, but if there's maybe direction we need to start focusing or looking, I know we, for budgets that are going to be coming up, would that be a topic that...
Yeah, central plant would be a good one.
Okay. Is there any, maybe some information on that, if you could?
Are there?
Anybody else?
Are you suggesting we have that meeting on the 8th of December?
Yes, sir.
Not sure how soon we can get it together.
Well, it does a lot to digest on y'all's end, so yes or whatever, just do more stuff.
I, as far as I was concerned, the suggestion that I was going to make is that we just not have a workshop on the 8th of December. Put it off until the next year.
That was my understanding too, was that we weren't going to have a workshop on the 8th.
It's just the next appropriate meeting.
But moving into January.
Is that good? Good?
Right.
Okay. Is that good, though? Jim? I got the look.
He's had Christmas shopping to do, too.
Well, for adjournment, I will call for a motion and a second, please.
Still move.
That counted. Potter and Mr. McCallie. This time it is 7:19.
Call.
You want to vote? Do we have to vote? Lydia, if you could please call the vote.
Turner.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Ben Kelly.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Ford Mary.
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries five to zero, and now it's not the shortest council meeting we've had. Then it is adjourned at 7:20. Thank you.